Welcome. I'd like to call this September 14, 2020 council meeting into order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hazelton. Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of August 24, 2020, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes?
Whoops.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening and will again meet in two weeks. Several items are on the agenda. Health, safety, and sanitation. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. Public properties. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special legislation. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting to discuss three different things recently. One was tethering of dogs, the other was feeding wild animals, and the third thing was demolition permits. In the discussion on tethering of dogs, we determined that basically that the objective of that legislation was already being met by the state. And so we voted no on that. The other two, feeding wild animals, we had a good discussion. Councilman Rose presented some reasonable, you know, ideas and thoughts about why it's important and how we could deal with it. We are going to continue to look at that legislation and bring it back for a final look at and discussion in the beginning of October. And the last thing was the demolition permits. We had a good discussion on that as well, and I'm working on some draft legislation for that same meeting to bring that back at the beginning of October. So feeding wild animals and demolition, we did not vote, but we'll return to both of those beginning of the next month.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks. Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, no scheduled meeting at this time.
Thank you. Emerging technologies. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance. We have 2175 budget amendments. We have 2176 donation of old computers to Medina City Schools. 2177 revision of Civil Service Rule Romanette 8 K2. 2198 expenditure of $15,000 to CTL Engineering, Inc. 2179 resolution support Spring Grove Arbor-Redham designation FOC. And 2180 preliminary legislation for ODOT State Route 18 Improvement Project. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamma?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank the public for their help in reducing the spread by following the guidelines of social distance, spread of COVID-19, I'm sorry, by social distancing, wearing masks in public, and avoiding large gatherings. Just last week, we saw the numbers increase by 77 when they had been over 100 for the last several weeks. So what we're doing is helping. Updated information on business openings, safety protocols, et cetera, on the city and Medina County Health Department website. And I'd also just like to ask everybody that can to support the local businesses because with the limited seating and limited crowd capacity, they could use all the help. The new parking deck is open and available to the public. We opened it a little more than a week ago, I think right after the last council meeting. The end of the month is the last opportunity to complete the U.S. Census, and we'd just like to encourage anybody that hasn't completed it to please do because the, getting the proper counts in our community helps us to qualify for state and federal grants based on the reporting. The, I was at the Medina Square Farmers Market this past Saturday for customer appreciation recognition. Councilman Rose and Fire Chief Bob Painter were there representing the city. The Farmers Market runs through October 17, and we just wanted to thank the vendors for being there as well as the attendees, and also encourage them to support the local businesses. The State of the City was presented to Medina City Council and the Medina Area Chamber of Commerce, and those links are posted on the city website for both presentations for anybody that may be interested. On Friday, 9/11, at 10:00 a.m., there was a Patriots' Day reflection ceremony at the 911 Memorial, which is just on the south side of Fire Station 1. And next year, it's my understanding, the Rotary is going to have a group of pastors dedicate the memorial on the 20th anniversary. I'll make sure council is aware of that. Halloween Trick or Treat will be held this year, October 31, from 6:00 to 8:00. We are going to encourage mask wearing, most kids wear masks anyway, social distancing and other precautions for the COVID, but also ask the residents just to be respectful of some residents that may have their lights off intentionally not to take part. They may be elderly or immune compromised or both, and we just don't want to take a chance of exposing them if they're not interested in participating. And last but not least is fiber to the home. There's a survey at www.madina.litcommunities.net, and by taking this survey, they're doing fiber to the home. They started down in Westfield Township, Westfield Center, the Lodi area. They're moving over to Seville and Guilford, then coming north up through Montville. And provided we get enough folks to take the survey, by having fiber to the home, this will permit the county fiber ring to be used for multiple vendors to create some competition, both for internet, TV, and phone applications that we simply don't have today. So I'd encourage folks to fill out the survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowers, Deputy Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing for finance is we implemented our new software last week, and the utility billing accounts have new account numbers. So if anybody's having issues trying to do online bill pay, they can just call our office, and we'll give them their new number. The new numbers will show up on the bills that go out at the end of this, beginning of next month. So then that problem will be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick note for the folks watching at home. The Police Department's seen an increase in vandalism and theft of political signs here recently in the past few weeks. If your signs have been tampered with or stolen, please call the Police Department so that we can track these incidences. It's important for everybody to understand that anyone engaging in that type of activity could potentially be charged with theft, criminal damage, and criminal trespassing. So those are some fairly serious offenses for essentially juvenile act. I just ask that everybody is respectful of their neighbors' property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note for council and the public this evening. The Ohio Means Jobs Office is partnering with Spray Products Corporation here in the city of Medina on two virtual career fairs that will be held on Thursday, September 17, and Tuesday, September 22, from, excuse me, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They have a need to hire between 100 and 200 people immediately, and they have about 17 different job openings. And if there are people interested in an online interview, because again, this is all virtual, they can contact Shawn Thomas at 330-441-0409. He's at the Ohio Means Jobs Office, and his email is Shawn, S-H-O-N dot Thomas at MedinaOMJ.org. Additionally, all of this information in this flyer is on the city's Facebook page. So if people want more details on the actual positions that are available, they can find it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two items tonight. A good portion of our single-track mountain bike trail at Huffman Cunningham is going to be closed for quite some time. The recent flooding that we had caused the river to substantially flood and therefore ruin many of our bridges. We have volunteers and Parks Department staff working to get some of those fixed so we can get a portion of them open. There's a lot of mountain bikers, trail runners, and walkers that use those trails, so we're doing the best we can. Secondly, just an update on sports associations. Our Medina Youth Gridiron, Medina Girls Softball Association, and Medina Soccer are all planning fall seasons. They are following the guidelines for Responsible Restart Ohio and have developed action plans to designate certain people to ensure that all the participants are complying with the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I want to announce is that South Broadway Project is officially open today. It's completed, and if you haven't had a get a chance, take a ride down there. We think it looks pretty nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report either. Thank you.
Thank you. Notice to Communications Petitions, we have won a liquor permit not to object at a transfer of a D1, D2, D3, and D6 permit to IBC Bars LLC, doing business as diner 42665 Lafayette Road, Medina from Wings, etc., of Marietta LLC, 101 Cricket Run Lane, Marietta, Ohio, 45750.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Unfinished business, we are still tabling Resolution 14420, introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear right microphone and state their name, and add or so could be added in the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to come in. Other portions of the meeting is adjourned by the chair by a vote of majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Mr. President, I'm Mike Ryan, 155 Rochon Drive, Medina, Ohio.
You do that for me.
Mike Ryan, 155 Rochon Drive, Medina, Ohio. First of all, I would like to apologize for my appearance. I've been on the road all day. I have head. I know I am, it's no, I intend no disrespect to anybody. I just wanted to come here tonight because I have a question. I don't even have a statement. I just have a question. Depending on who you talk to, there is a very wide disparity in what a yes vote and a no vote on the issue, save the courthouse on the ballot for November 3rd means. And so, I mean, I have heard a number of things, some very short and some very long. And so my question is, one question to parts. What are the benefits and the consequences of a yes vote, and what are the benefits and the consequences of a no vote? That's it. That's my question.
Okay, I guess to answer that question, you have to know the facts. I think the facts are very important, and I'm going to give some of the facts, and Mayor, I think you can add a minute with the ones that I missed regarding the combined courthouse project with the county. The first fact is, the estimated budget for the combined project is $38 million. Eight million of that is coming from the city of Medina, and 30 million of that is coming from the county. So that's the first fact. The ballot issue is only going to be voted on by city residents. So they'll be voting on whether or not, you know, the city should spend $8 million to join in the combined courthouse. That's the city's portion. It's not, we're not paying 38 million as a city. You know, the county's not paying 38 million. The county's paying 30, the city's paying eight. That is the estimated cost. Now for that, there's going to be a building constructed. The building is going to be constructed on the east side of the square behind the current existing buildings of the old 1843 courthouse, the 1969 courthouse, and the prosecutor's office, which used to be, I think it's an 1840, I don't know the exact date, building. So that's going to be behind that. None of the buildings that are currently existing on the east side of the square are going to be torn down. That's the fact. None of them are going to be torn down for this project. The project just entails building behind them, new court facilities behind them, so that the front facades and the front buildings, all the buildings will be preserved and remain the same. So that's another fact. The size of the building that's going to be constructed is going to be around 129,600 square feet or 290 square feet, somewhere around that number, will be constructed. Of that, the city will be occupying 27,013 square feet of that. So again, the city's portion is smaller, the county's portion is larger because there's multiple common pleas courts, there's domestic relations courts, there's a probate and juvenile court. They're all going to be housed in there. And for the city portion of it, it's just our municipal court is going to be involved, and that's what it's going to entail. So that's another fact. So with those facts, if you vote yes, you're saying, yes, I do not want the city to move forward with this project. I want the city to not do the project with the county. They could do something else. Now, being involved on council for a long time, we've been dealing with this issue for approximately 20 years with regarding a municipal court. We went through different renditions of the court. We wanted to build the court on its own across the street here where the parking deck is. We talked about that. We talked about building, renovating the court as it exists on the current space and trying to deal with the disruptions that occur. Where do you move the court in the interim? How do you do it if you could do it together? The latest cost we had with doing a court here at City Hall was $9.3 million. And right now, we have a court that we're estimated, our cost is estimated as a city to be $7,930,000, which is less than 8 million, and we had 9.3 million out here. So that's a pretty good deal. And the other things that we looked at was why do we want to do this with the county? And if you recall, I think city residents have to remember, there are also county residents, right? So how do we save money for the taxpayers? Well, we try to combine efforts. We try to centrally locate things. We try to do things that would be more efficient, efficient operations. Now, sometimes that's kind of strange coming from a governmental entity, but yes, we want to be efficient. So if we combined our efforts, we would have one security entrance. Now, if you had two separate buildings, you'd have to have security for the municipal court over here, and then the county would have to have security over there. Now, that would be double the cost. So who ultimately pays for that is the residents, of course, that the city, Medina, and the county would be paying for that. So there's an efficiency there. There's an efficiency with having one building housing all of the court facilities in the county, except for the Wadsworth Municipal Court, since they're in Wadsworth, because electricity could be shared. The HVAC system, heating and cooling, could be shared. We already have a parking nick there that we built years ago that would be used to, and it's ample size to cover the amount of traffic that'll be used at the court, even combining them, because it's a 360-space parking deck. So all these things combined give a better approach of working together. So again, if you go back to your question, what does a yes vote mean? A yes vote means that we do not want the city to participate in this. We want the city to do their own thing. If it costs more money, so be it. We want the city to do their own thing. If you vote no, it means yes, you know, if you vote no, and this is kind of confusing, a no vote is good for the city in that, you know, you want the city to participate. So a no vote is participate, a yes vote is not participate, I guess if you break it down like that. But knowing all the facts with respect to what this vote is, this vote will not stop, possibly stop tearing down a courthouse because they're not being torn down. So that has nothing to do with this vote because it's already been shown through the efforts of the county and the city that the buildings on the east side are staying. So this has nothing to do with tearing buildings down, not tearing buildings down, because the buildings are going to remain. So no matter what happens, the buildings will be there. So Mayor, I don't know if there's other things that you want to add to that?
So the 69 building would not be saved had it not been for the efforts of the city council and the administration to meet with the commissioners and tell them that there was a strong desire on behalf of the citizens to keep that same look on the square. So that's exactly what the commissioners agreed to do. In addition to some of the efficiencies that Mr. Coin talked about, if you think about them doing their project and us doing our project, we're going to need elevators. If we're in one building, we can share the same elevators. Elevators are very expensive in a commercial building of this size. The fact that we can share elevators, we can share meeting rooms, we can share restrooms. Council President Coin mentioned the security checkpoint, the parking. All of those are efficiencies. It's also efficiencies for the attorneys that are there. Instead of having one case there at 9 o'clock, having to run across two blocks for a 10 o'clock case, go back for an 11 o'clock case, now you're just going up to different floors and different courtrooms. And the other thing is, if you think about the amount of money that the city has expended in this process just thus far for the engineering, for the design, for the preliminary drawings, to see would it all work, and then now to just say that's money out the window, and we're going to start fresh and start with new engineering, new design, all of those things, from a taxpayer's standpoint, in my mind, just does not make good frugal sense.
Yeah, and also just to explain a little bit more, some of the questions were, well, why don't you just renovate your current building or renovate the current 69 building and go with that? Well, I think when people, when you say renovate, you got to understand you have to move people out in order to fix up the building. And I think the estimated cost for the county to move all the common pleas courts, domestic, and probate was $2 million. Because you have to find a place, you have to build it out, you have to make it secure, so there's a cost to that. So that's an extra $2 million. So instead of spending $2 million that you won't have any tangible worth at the end because you're spending it, then you're going to bring everybody back. So it's just like spending $2 million and you get nothing for it. That's just with the county. We had an estimate done at the municipal court. If we had to move the municipal court out and find a place and move them back, it was $350,000. So that's our cost. So if we had to do both separately, you're talking about $2.35 million that, at the end of the day, we wouldn't have no tangible asset at the end. That's just for moving people and moving them back. So I think that's important to look at, that the design of this project is behind the current existing facilities in which you don't have to move everybody out and then move everybody back. All you have to do is move them from the existing building to the new building. And then the old building could be used for whatever and renovated or done whatever it needs to be done with for other county offices, which makes great sense, because it'll be right next to the court. You know, there's a bunch of different uses that could happen there, and you know, who knows what the county could use that for. And what would happen to our building? Some questions were asked, well, what would happen to our building if it's vacant? Well, the county could use it, the Board of Elections, there's all these different ideas that we have to use to bring things back to the square of Medina. So I think there's some benefits in that regard. But I think we're going to be putting together a fact sheet explaining the different facts, as I just explained them to you, so the public is aware that they could be an informed voter. I think the worst thing that can happen is we have people going to the voting booth not knowing why they're voting yes or no. I mean, if you want to vote yes, or if you want to vote no, do so with the facts, because once you have the facts, it's up to you to make your own decision. But we just want to make sure everybody has the facts. And if there's any questions, you can definitely call City Hall, call the mayor, call whomever you'd like to get the information. We just want to make sure you have the information. We don't necessarily want to tell you how to vote, but we want to make sure you're an informed voter. So that's pretty much what we want to do. Okay? I hope that answers your question. It's kind of long, but...
Yes, and I think that the fact sheet is a good idea because there are people who are not on that page.
Okay, okay, that's good. Okay, thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, sir.
So I'm visiting from Medina Township. My name's Chuck Johnson. I'm the newly elected Township trustee back in January. So I just wanted to come and introduce myself. My address is 3298 Fossett Road in Medina Township. President Coin, I thought that was a great rendition of trying to explain that, because when you have a thing like that where yes means no and no means yes, it can get confusing. And I was actually wondering that myself. So it was good that I came to the meeting. But again, I just wanted to come and introduce myself, just let you know that my door is open, and I know that we have, you know, working relationship with you guys at the fire department. I just want to let you guys know that I'm still working on trying to make that transition with the new contract go smoother, and I appreciate your guys' patience, and, you know, look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, we have introduction and consideration of ordinances, resolutions. We have a, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 15220, Resolution 15320, Ordinance 15420, Ordinance 15520, Ordinance 15620, Ordinance 15720, Ordinance 15820, Ordinance 15920, Ordinance 16020, Ordinance 16120, Ordinance 16220, and Ordinance 16320.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on tonight's ordinances.
Second.
Any discussion on suspending the rules? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules for three readings?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Ordinance 15220, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12021 Dodge Durango all-wheel-drive midsize SUV from Fred Martin Superstore for the building department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Gladish?
This is a planned budgeted purchase for a replacement vehicle for the building permits an inspection department. Now that we know that we don't have a choice, but it's going to be a 2021, there is a slight not to exceed price increase on this.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or comment on that ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 152-20 passes seven, six zero.
Resolution 15320, resolution authorizing a mayor to submit a grant application with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, OEP, for electric vehicle charging stations for the City Hall parking deck.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add the emergency clause at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the program we've been talking about for quite a while. This is funded through the state Environmental Protection Agency. It's money's collected from the VW settlement, and this is intended to install electrical vehicle charging stations throughout key points in the state of Ohio. We will be applying for eight Level 2 chargers. We're asking for the emergency clause. This program first became advertised finally in July. By the time we submitted it, council was out of session. Passing this tonight, it is due on September 30, so that's less than the 30 days before it comes in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding is these are four separate stations, but eight separate charging receptacles.
Right. We will be submitting for four dual-port chargers, which should give us eight total.
Okay, and if you recall, we had the parking deck, so to speak, wired to insert these in a certain area of the parking deck. So once they're installed, people with individual electric cars can come to the parking deck, I believe swipe a credit card to charge their car for the period of time that they want to charge it for in the parking deck. So this will be a convenient and help be eco-friendly, so to speak, to allow those people who have electric charging vehicles to visit the city Medina and also have a way to charge your vehicle while they're here. So I think that's a pretty good result, and hopefully we'll be able to get these stations and they'll be installed. Do we know the timing of when they would be in by any chance?
According to EPA, they won't make their awards until January or February of 2021. Assuming we're successful, I would think it would probably be a few months after that by the time they're installed.
Probably next summer, we'd be able to put those in if, you know, if we receive the awards. Okay, thanks. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Resolution 153-20 passes six zero.
Ordinance 15420, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Florida Explorer interceptors from... Ordinance 15420, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Ford Explorer interceptors from Lebanon Ford for the police department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Chief Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a, uh, ordinance for the purchase of two frontline cruisers. And they'll be 2021 Ford Explorers. They're budgeted and state bid.
Part of our recite, part of our replacement.
Yes, sir.
Process, okay. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 154-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 15520, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve the trade-in of two 2015 police cruisers and accept $8,000 towards the purchase of two new cruisers from Lebanon Ford for the police department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Chief Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. As stated, it's, uh, trade-in for credit to the new vehicles.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 155-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 15620, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for the auction, sale, and disposal of city equipment and vehicles no longer in use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual city auction. Uh, we have a tentative date upon council's approval tonight for Saturday, October 17th, 2020. It'll be held at the City Garage, 781 West Smith Road, um, as in every year, and we will follow the, uh, guidance in place at the time with respect to COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 156-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 15720, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the West Liberty Storm Sewer Improvement City Hall Parking Deck Detention Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as mentioned, this is to install the detention, uh, management system and the storm sewer required to handle that, uh, for the parking deck. This originally was going to be the responsibility of our contractor. Council may remember that we asked them to nonperform that, uh, because we wanted to move it to the east side of the lot to allow for the future development, the lot to be larger. Um, doing that, we were issued a credit. Uh, we were asking for the emergency clause because as you know, the part, the deck is open. Currently, it's being drained through some pumps. That is just a temporary condition. We'd like to get this permanent result as soon as we can.
Thank you. And we also waited, if, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, because of the development occurring on West Liberty, we wanted to make sure the location of it and the size of it will both handle the parking deck and the new development.
Yes, it will, uh, it is being sized to accommodate the future development.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 157-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 15820, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a LPA federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODA, for the West Smith Road Phase 4 project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as you know, we were awarded a little over $2 million for the reconstruction of, uh, Phase 4 of West Smith, which is the last phase of West Smith. That money is through, uh, it's federal money managed by NOAACA and allocated through ODOT. This, uh, is our request to ODOT to allow us to be the LPA, the local project administrator, which means we would bid and manage the project. Uh, we've done this several times in the past. One previous phase of West Smith, the Guilford Boulevard Bridge, we're used to it. It saves us the cost. Uh, ODOT charges you, uh, if they have to manage it. It's, can be up to upwards of 8% of the total project cost. So it saves us money and gives us control of the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 158-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 15920, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with American Structure Point, Inc. to provide design services for the West Smith Road Phase 4 project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the same project, uh, West Smith Road. Uh, anytime you use federal money and you go through ODOT, you have to engage a consultant that is pre-qualified in several different areas. And you're also required to go through a design selection process. It's called qualification-based selection. We did that. Uh, it, it took several months. We narrowed it down to three different firms that we thought were the most qualified. We interviewed them. Councilman Heffinger was part of our interview group. Appreciate his help. And in the end, we've decided that American Structure Point is the most qualified and we'd like to recommend them for the, uh, project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 159-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 16020, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an improvement agreement with the Medina Community Design Committee for repainting and repair to the city's interurban ticket building.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a project that is kind of come through for, uh, private entity, the Medina Community Design Committee in partnership through a, uh, a grant that mainstream Medina is helping to, uh, access. Uh, these two private entities want to do a repaint job and minor repair work to the interurban building, which is the small, uh, uh, building on South Court Street. Uh, it's on city property. It's city property itself. So this, uh, improvement agreement just kind of lays the groundwork for who pays for what and whose responsibility it is, uh, between the city and the CDC and ma, and, or CDC. So, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Lamb serves on the committee for CDC, correct?
Yes.
So you have to abstain on this one, I believe. Just, that's, I was just double checking.
Okay, that's what you were asking me. Thank you. I was going to ask you because I was intended to do that and I wanted to make sure you didn't
Yep.
re, you know, forget again like you frequently do with abstentions.
Sometimes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Abstain.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 160-20 passes 5 VAs, 1 abstention.
Ordinance 16120, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a revocable use permit with Beacon Farmers Exchange LLC for the project sign for the Medina Brew Company business at 320 South Court Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is, uh, a revocable use permit to allow a, a projecting sign over the South Crete, South Court Street public right-of-way, specifically the public sidewalk. This ha, sign would hang off of the, uh, west facade of the one-story portion of the building that is adjacent to South Court Street. Um, and to be consistent with a BZA approval that the planning, that they had received last year, and also to try to mirror some of the historical signage that was on the building, which was part of, kind of was a factor in their, uh, historical preservation, their historic preservation tax credits through the state and federal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 161-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 16220, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Friends of the Cemetery for cemetery drainage improvements at Spring Grove Cemetery.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this agreement is for a drainage project in sections 11 and 12 at Spring Grove Cemetery. Uh, the Friends of the Cemetery contracted, uh, Cunningham and Associates back in 2019 to do a storm sewer drainage analysis report. Uh, the city was able to complete many of the items identified in that report, uh, except for, uh, this larger project in which the Friends of the Cemetery, uh, uh, get engaged Cunningham and Associates again, uh, to do a, uh, prepare plans and a construction estimate, uh, for this work. The, uh, Friends of the Cemetery are planning to bid this project and enter into a contract with a construction company of their choice. And then upon the, uh, completion of the project, wants the city to accept, uh, this improvement as a gift. The, uh, project estimate is just a little over $26,000. Uh, I would like to thank the Friends of the Cemetery, uh, for spearheading this effort. Uh, drainage has been a significant issue in these sections and we look forward to getting improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
I'd just like to echo what, uh, Jansen and has said about the Friends of the Cemetery. Again, uh, they've, they're stepping up and, and this, this cost is a little over $26,000. But it will be a great improvement and, and again, I'm, I'm sure I can speak for the rest of the council members and administration how much we appreciate, uh, this effort that they're, they're providing us this time.
Thank you. Any further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 162-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 16320, an ordinance amending ordinance number 18719 passed November 25th, 2019, amendments to the 2020 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mrs. Bowers.
These are just, um, adjustments to the budget and new appropriations for the CARES Act funds that we received and some grants that we received.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 163-20 passes 6-0.
Okay, we have council comments, and I just wanted to do one more clarification for Mr. Ryan because I don't think we talked about this. The question was going to be, where does this $8 million come from, from the city? How do they, how's the city, where are they going to borrow this money from or how are they going to get the money? Well, the first thing is we are not borrowing any money to build the courthouse. Um, believe it or not, we saved for this, both through the court efforts and through the city efforts.